Oh, meaning all, begin with the pledge of allegiance.
We believe in the spirit of the United States of America and through the Republic for Richard Sanders, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, take a moment for silent reflection. Thank you. Come on to item C, meetings to note, there's a board practical meeting, January fifteenth, twenty twenty five, dirt to Walker Elementary School, three thirty P M. Four or more board members may be in attendance. Item D is approval of the agenda with the following amendments. D one, remove item F four C, the consent agenda, appoint Genie and Jenny, Genie, Genie, Billings as representative for the Kansas Public Employees Retirement System for the remainder of the fiscal year of twenty twenty four, twenty five, and D two, additional certified and classified personnel actions for consideration, item F three.
President, I move we approve the agenda with the stated amendments.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your left hand. Same motion carries. We'll move on to item E, delegation of public comments, and we do have one, Jennifer Stanley. Just a reminder, you do have five minutes.
Focus on status.
Okay, God bless you.
And I wrote it down, so maybe I could stay on track.
Glory is yours.
Okay. Good evening. I am here to share my concerns about the future of the YMCA Dome and this district's consideration to purchase the buildings. It is my hope that you vote to end the partnership with the YMCA and ask them to remove the facility. I think a brick and mortar addition would be a better long-term investment to the district. I've followed this since I was on the board before, so I know a little bit of history of it. I felt that way before it was put up, particularly since the realignment of grade levels is still in discussions, and I predict there will be a request to add on to cage in the next five to ten years. I think that's something to consider. And I know you guys have already spent hours discussing this, so try not to be too repetitive. It's clear to me that this type of structure is simply not economical, especially when it comes to the heating or cooling of the facility and our extremely fluctuating environment. And there's also a number of safety concerns with the structure and the interior of the building which affects our students participating in sports and activities. And I don't recall the lifetime of the dome, but I imagine the maintenance costs will continue to increase quickly. And it is my understanding that the YMCA has requested for, for the district to purchase the dome. I don't exactly remember the wording of all of these words that comes up. But I don't believe that any of these tax dollars should go towards this unnecessary expense. And if they do not wish to remove the facility, I think the YMCA should pay the district what it would cost for the district to remove it. Purchasing the dome may appear like a quick and easy fix in the short term, but please keep in mind the bigger picture and what is best for our community as a whole. This physically, this, I can't speak now. You're responsible for the school district to pay a single dollar to the YMCA for their poor business decisions. In fact, I think the YMCA should pay the district the cost of removing the dome if they so choose to abandon the facility. U S D four five seven already has a long list of maintenance and facility repairs and expenses that should take priority. And it's way harder to speak here than back there. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item E one, election of board of education officers and consider a resolution to establish election of the school board officer.
Mr. President, I move to adopt the resolution to establish election of the school board officer.
Well, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your left hand. Oppose, same. Motion carries. Okay, move on to item E two, recognition of Diego Torres Rosales for being awarded the outstanding student technology award for outstanding use of his AAC communications device. Lucas Solomon, then school at Garden City Chief.
I'll keep it under five minutes as well.
You got two, but.
All right. Go ahead and come up.
I'll let you stand right there, Diego.
That work? All right, I'd like to congratulate Diego Torres Rosales.
So I just had, I knew the technicals.
Garden City achieved.
Got the student.
And a student in our start program on winning an outstanding student technology award for the use of his AAC device. So the AAC device is augmented and alternative communication device. Last month, Diego, his mom Maria, teacher Caitlin Satello, and parrot and translator Andrea Padilla Rivera traveled to Wichita to accept his award during the Kansas Infinitec Coalition Conference in Wichita. I'd like to thank Special Director Gina Galpin for being there as well. Since Diego began using his AAC device, it's been awesome to see the growth he's made. It's unlocked a whole new world for Diego and his ability to communicate. Diego runs the Strive Shop, which goes up to our high school and sells snacks and drinks to our high school kids. So it's been really cool to see him interact and take orders through that. And Diego's story will be part of the AAC device training tomorrow at Garfield Early Education Center with our PD that will be with the Leap and Rise Room. So really cool. Shout out Miss Satello and all her work with him and then Gianna Brown as well. And then parents Maria and Juan are here as well, that they've done a great job with Diego. So it's really been cool to see Diego's growth with, and then the ability to get this state award was really neat. So, thank you. Get a picture with the mortgage down, get a pic. All right, so we're gonna go get a picture, is that all right? All right?
We're gonna take a picture.
B. One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three. All right.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Hey, Mom and Dad, I think Mom and Dad.
Mom and Dad.
Yeah, Mom and Dad.
Here, you want a pin?
Congratulations. You're going to get over there by Diego.
Yeah, we'll let you get closer to your son. How about that? Kayla, yeah, get him here.
Hey, man, we're getting it.
Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good job, Diego. So for Ben, good job. Right, Andy's mom and dad want to do a pic too. It's good, it's awesome. It's awesome.
That's great. Good stuff. Okay, item E three. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
I move on to item E three, recognition of board of education members for school board recognition month. Dr. Mike Dominguez.
Yeah, and we just called y'all up and then everybody's gonna get one, so y'all just go ahead and come on up when it's your time. But school board, more times than not, they don't understand what they're getting into once they become a school board member. They pay with their time, energy, and effort, and this board definitely does that. Most boards actually, on the average, state averages about twelve hours a week. I would say this board probably spends a lot more than that. Definitely their heart is in it and their passion is definitely shown in that. So definitely want to recognize them. January is Board Appreciation Month. We give them a quarter hoodie and we're getting some shirts and some swag to help you down the road, but also a certificate for your house. So there you go. All right. Certificate of Service Randy Ralston in board presence. Come on around and we're gonna take pictures. Uh, Mr. Cessna is going to be taking pics and then we're gonna take a big one together, right? There you go.
Great.
Okay. Yeah, you could do that.
All right.
Right over there, man, because they move our kind about certification of service for my kind. And then the next thing is, that's actually on the webpage, your pictures, your mugs are on there, so that's good.
Yeah.
Our mug.
A shot.
Yeah. You know, you know, congratulations to Pastor Heck, Cessna and Heck, but there you go. We go by Pastor around here. So there you go, the man. So appreciate your service for sure. I'm in effort.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Ms. Jackie Jigga. And she has a monster truck out in the parking lot. She doesn't, she doesn't even have a pic though. She says, that's awesome. You have dual knees for your paddle, so I know you do. Andy Firemire, Mr. Andy Firemire. Vice President, get over here, see there.
One, two, three.
Andy's driving the Jeep today, though. That's Robin Bertan. Thank y'all for your service and we'll take a pic with everybody.
Thank you.
Always good to see Robin.
One, two, three. Hold on, one more. Get a little closer there. All right.
Now, let's get one big one for everybody and then this also will be on the website for you guys. There you go. Board of Appreciation Month, January seventh.
Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your service.
Dr. Dominguez, move on to item E four, received district audit report from Louis Super and Dick.
And Tiffany, you're getting set up here. I'll just introduce myself. I'm Teresa Daysenbrock with Louis Super and Dick. Lisa's going to be doing the presentation tonight and Tiffany's gonna be helping with the slides, hopefully trying to use the pointer to point out key points in the presentation as we go. Feel free to ask questions as we go or before the end, if you want to try and address them. I'm sure. Ready to go? I think so. Sure to don't release it. Okay.
Um, we're gonna start off with a comparison of the budget per pupil in the mill levy and the general fund. Gonna start at the bottom and work the way up. So starting, okay, starting at the bottom with the red line. So that red line is your mill levy. Right now, the Kansas has a twenty mil state-based tax levy to all property tax owners to help fund K through twelve education. From nineteen ninety four to nineteen ninety seven, it was at thirty-five mils. It dropped down to twenty-eight mils in nineteen ninety eight and has stayed at twenty mils since then. That pink line, the line right above it, is your budget per pupil. For twenty twenty five, you're looking at five thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The blue line right above it is if you take that budget per pupil and you inflate it with inflation, what it would actually be. So for twenty twenty five, you would get an additional two thousand one hundred and eighty-nine dollars if it actually kept up with inflation. The next graph is a comparison of your F T E, which is a full-time equivalent, your budget per pupil, and then the mill levy. And this is looking across all funds. So starting at the bottom again with the red line, over the last ten-year period, the district's average mill rate has been forty-eight point eight eight four mils. For twenty twenty four, you're looking at forty-six point five eight eight mils. The green line is your F T E. For twenty twenty four, you're looking at six thousand six hundred and thirty-two. And then the blue line is your budget per pupil. Like I said, that's across all funds. For twenty twenty four, it's seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Now, this is gonna fluctuate depending on the capital projects that's going on in the district, what kind of funding you're getting from the district. So the last few years, it's been higher because of the COVID S R funding that the district has received. Declining enrollment will also increase these numbers. The next graph looks expenditures across all funds by type as a percentage. There were three areas that went down this year, food service, healthcare and capers, and then central services. And then there's two areas that were down, facilities and instruction support. Instruction alone makes up about forty-two percent of the district's expenditures. But if you looked at instruction with related categories, so student support, healthcare and capers, and instruction support, district is spending about sixty-seven percent on instruction. And then the next two graphs is taking your expenditures across all funds by type, but we're looking at the dollars. And it's split into two graphs, just so you can kind of see these numbers. And just to touch base on a little bit, you can see instruction has gone up steadily over the last few years. General and school administration in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three saw a few fluctuations due to accrued leave payouts. And then on the next set of expenditures, facility acquisition, the last three years, you've seen a few spikes in expenditures due to your large HVAC projects, re-roofing of some school buildings, and then you've done some investments in some video awards. And then kind of like instruction, healthcare and capers has been steadily going up over the last few years. The next graph looks at receipts as percentages across all funds, picking out transfers. State resources makes up sixty-six percent of the revenue coming into the district. Local taxes only makes up eleven percent. So if you're looking at a dollar, only eleven cents of that dollar is actually coming from your local taxes. The next graph takes those receipts and looks at it dollar-wise. Taxes, you can see, have steadily been going up. That twenty mils of the state levies, that is categorized under state resources, and those have steadily gone up over the last few years. Federal resources, the last three years, you've seen fluctuations due to COVID funding, spending, getting that S R money in. Health insurance premiums have also steadily been going up as well. And then just to touch base a little bit on statement one of the financial statements, and this is on page five, if you're looking through it. At the end of the year, the total of all district funds equaled about thirty-nine million. Total funds over last year increased about fourteen million. This was kind of a planned increase. The district changed how they were encumbering money. So part of that increase is because of how the district was doing their encumbrances. And then the next graph is our debt outstanding. We like just to go over these numbers. It's on page twelve of the financial statements. As the reports you're getting from Jessica in the finance office, you probably are not seeing these numbers on a regular basis. So at the end of the year, the district had about seventy-four million in general obligation bonds. You had finance leases totaling twelve million. This is mainly due to the HVAC project that the district has been doing. And then employee compensated absences ended the year with nine hundred and eleven thousand. And then the next few graphs compares four, five, seven to districts of the same similar size. We always kind of like to see what our neighbors are doing. The first graph, just to talk about these districts, we're comparing you to fifteen districts with an F T E of five thousand to thirteen thousand. That red line is your F T E. Four, five, seven's F T E unweighted is six thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight. You're kind of right in the middle of this group of fifteen. The yellow bar shows the mils for the districts. Four, five, seven is coming in at forty-six point five eight eight. Erie County is always the lowest in this group because of the military funding they're getting. Their mill levy's coming in about forty-three point seven one nine. Andover is always the highest in the group, and they're coming in about sixty-six mils. Liberal is a little higher than Garden City. They're coming in at forty-nine point eight nine. And then Dodge City is coming in at fifty-six point nine five seven. The next graph kind of breaks down the mill levy, so you can kind of see the breakdown compared to the other districts. That red bar is that twenty mils that all districts have in the general fund. The yellow bar is your bond and interest. Four, five, seven is at six point four two mils for your bond and interest. L O B is your green bar. Four, five, seven is at thirteen mils. And then that other bar is gonna vary for all the districts, but for most districts, that's gonna be your capital outlay, which you can go up to eight mils. Four, five, seven's capital outlay is sitting at a little over seven mils. And then just to compare apples to apples across the district, because everybody's doing things a little bit differently, if you look at taxes paid on a hundred thousand dollar home, of course, Erie County's gonna be the lowest. They're coming at a, coming in at four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Four, five, seven is the third lowest, coming in at four hundred and ninety. Andover is always the highest. They're coming in at seven hundred, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Dodge City is coming in at six, six hundred and nine dollars. And then Liberal's coming in at five hundred and twenty-eight. And then our final graph just looks at the history of four, five, seven's mill levy, and we're looking back about thirty years. And what you can see is that in twenty twenty five, you're levying forty-nine point five six one mils. If you look back at nineteen ninety-five, we're in about the same spot. You're levying forty-nine point eight. And then the next page, we talked a little bit about the audit report. Overall, the district had a clean audit report. There was a couple of material weaknesses that we go into depth in the management letter and the letter to the governing body. We've gone through those letters in detail with management and with the audit committee, so we won't spend a lot of time this evening going over those letters. The comments have already been addressed. We really don't have any major concerns about any of the comments. If you do have any questions as you're going through those letters or any of the audit information, please feel free to reach out for us. So that is all I have for the audit. Do you guys have any questions?
Take that as a no.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And we want to be sure and thank Jessica, all the district staff, because the audit is your financial statements, so without all the effort they put in, we couldn't do an audit. So we appreciate the effort and the good job they've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Move on to item F, the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve your consent agenda.
That's okay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your left hand. Oppose, same. Motion carries. E new business, board of education is asked to consider and approve the following curriculum council items. Doc Guy, Deputy Superintendent.
So just a couple of things this month. We have a couple of classes that we'd like to add. One is an exploring arts class. And basically, that's for, for students that are wanting to maybe pursue a career in, career in the arts, what that would look like. It kind of walks them through how to get their art out there publicly, how to be recognized, how to, how to identify their art in public, how to make those connections and things like that. And then they talk about a lot of other jobs that are available if you have a degree in art and what that would look like. And so they do that with some of the classes, but I think they're wanting a class where they can go more in-depth with the students to, to talk about what that class would look like. So that's what that one would be. The other one is another AP class. So the high school's wanting to add AP US government politics. That would be a second semester class, and so obviously this time of the year, it's not gonna happen until next year. So at this point, they're just asking for permission to add the course. And then they need to look at, we'll have to, there'll have to be a different curriculum for the AP class, so they'll have to vet a textbook. And so that will come to you later for that. If, if you approve the course, then we would ask that you, we'll bring the textbook later, once, once we get approval for that. And the last thing is the curriculum for, for Teach Town, which is, it's our, it's our, our functional curriculum. And so students like, that are in the rise room, like Caitlin was with today, students that are in our lead classrooms, the, it's a, it's a integrated text, or integrated curriculum. We've been using it. This should have already come to you all. I think we piloted it a couple of years ago, and then for some reason, I think when the transition between me and Gina happened, we never brought it to you all after, after we kind of piloted it with a couple of classrooms. But it's integrated so that they're getting their math, their, their ELA, social studies, they get all of those components with that curriculum. And it's really geared to their, their instructional level. There's a lot of ability to individualize that for each student. And so that's, that's the curriculum that we're asking for approval on. Any questions? This would just be a first read, so it'll be on the consent agenda the next meeting in February.
Okay. Thanks, Johnny.
Thank you.
Item G two, the board of education is asked to consider and approve a proposal for new all-inclusive playground with K V A compliant curfewing, Edith Sherman Elementary School. Brandon Anderson, Director of Plank Silvers.
Good evening, board. Echo everyone else's thoughts. Appreciate what you do. I know it's one of those very thankless jobs, so appreciate what you guys do as a board of education. But a couple of items on the agenda tonight. First one is we're revisiting the playground at Edith Sherman. We brought it forward one other time. We did reach out and got another quote. We have two quotes tonight to consider. The new one is with Game Time. The one that was originally submitted is with Play World. Play World, Next Generation Recreation is who we have done business with the last couple of years with, through Sourcewell. Their quoting bid comes through at one sixty-four oh sixty-six. The Game Time Cunningham Recreation one comes in at one sixty-four nine forty-one oh nine. If you remember, the first time that I brought this forward to you, it was substantially lower than the. it was substantially lower than this. What we did, and the reason why it's a higher quote this time is, is we did put our heads together and realized that there's a, with a bigger sped, sped program at Edith Sherman, we wanted to put in an all-inclusive playground area, make it turf and make it, you know, upgrade it to make it compliant. So with that, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that's budgeted in our capital plan, and then we'd be using sped funds to cover the rest of the expenditure. That's why it's a larger cost at this time. Both, I believe, like we say, we, our experience with Next Generation Rec and Play World has been good. The new company Cunningham Recreation and their equipment, I believe, is a quality product as well. Obviously, in talking to salesmen, all of them have the absolute best product out there. And maybe there is the possibility that, that, that that equipment is of, of higher quality. I'm not certain. I don't believe we have any Game Time equipment. The one concern that I have moving forward is, and then he was, he was honest with me is their products are higher through Game Time. The reason we're getting a substantial discount this time is where they, they kind of, an enticement is that we're eligible for grant funds through them. So they're giving us a grant eligible on the equipment cost. So the grant that we would be receiving would be fifty-eight thousand dollars off of the original quote of around two nineteen. So it's one of those decisions. I mean, you know, both of them are right there, a hundred and sixty-four thousand. One of them is a known supplier that we're, we've worked with. I will be honest with you. When I first started reaching out to them, I was getting frustrated because I couldn't get them. But they've had a change in, in the gentleman who used to work with us. And I, and I know Brad's here. Brad used to handle this, you know, for us. And he had moved up into administration or higher up. And once I got hooked up with Rodney Born, though, we're right back on track with that company in the same manner. So for your consideration, these two quotes, you know, I think they're, they're, they're as close to apples and apples as they can be. If you look at the Cunningham Recreation component, and I think maybe you guys got a supplement today. Is that correct, Jennifer? They, they changed some, just some language and dates within their actual proposal. And when I got that, I forwarded it to Jennifer mistakenly. We pulled the entire proposal out and only gave you those five sheets. So you should have got the rest of them today, the six or seven inclusion, which shows the design. You can tell from that design, it's about two hundred and forty square foot larger that area is, and it, and it's got more kind of individualized items. And maybe the other one is, is kind of more all packed in and inclusive. The, the, the Play World product, we've added to it, but that same slide and, and unit we have at VO, we have it at Achieve. And where else? I think off the ground has the same, same product too. So, so I'll stand for questions now.
So Brennan, if, how is this reusable stuff? Say, you know, we do the grade reconfiguration and we move all of the sped to, I'm, I'd just say Horsegood. I'd just throw an A squatter. Can this stuff be moved to a new location or is it, once it's in, it's in?
Oh, I think, you know, what, what I tell you is once it, once it's in, it's in. I think what you, a lot of times your concern is, will it go back in the same way it was intended to be installed the first time? And so that would be a concern. Obviously, it could be used and reused in components, but you would have to be very mindful and making sure that you're doing it right. I mean, if you're like me and put stuff together, I'm always happy if there's only three pieces left over in the end. But we would be better than you and I probably putting it back together.
So from the pictures, the second one is quite a bit more equipment, right? I mean, I can't really tell.
I think it's more individualized. I think the slides are, you know, at, one, one has a large slide that, that offers kind of, you know, a lot of play on. And I think that was one of the selling points too with Game Time is that their components are, are not as large. So some of those large pieces on the original one, in, in his, to his benefit, I mean, I just started working with him. So I just, and, and probably this wasn't really fair to Rodney at, at Play World, but I just redacted the numbers and sent him what, what they had proposed originally and said, I'd like to send apples to apples comparison. And that's what he proposed.
Have you got any feedback from the staff at Edith Sherman? Or this, any of, any of the teachers here, your students are going to be on this playground as to which one of these two they would prefer?
Well, and, and none of them are going to have any experience with, with the Game Time one. And the, everyone else that has the other, I know the only concern that we've got and Gina's left, but at, at VO, that piece of equipment is strictly in the sped playground area. And there's some concerns with climbing up the outside where maybe they, they are not intended to climb. We've been reassured by Game Time, when they put that safe play surface in, that it is safe. But there have been some concerns there. But, you know, it's just like everything else with schools. When everything else is going good, nobody, nobody jumps out and, you know, tells us all the good things. But, but I haven't heard that many complaints. But we have worked with Randy at Edith Sherman in the original design of this. And I know she's seen the original proposal. I don't know that she's seen the second one.
So remember, is the Game Time one the one that she's seen? Or is it the?
The Play World one is the one she, that she picked out the components in.
That's, okay. And it's the Game Time one that was more, but they're offering a, a grant.
A one-time grant.
One-time grant, okay.
And he was, he was honest with me and said, our, our products in the long run do cost more. Where I mean, so if we were just, if I was doing an apple to apples without the grant, this would be a two hundred and nineteen thousand dollar piece of equipment.
And there's about two hundred and forty more square feet of turf with that package.
Yes, yes. And I think that's, as we move forward, and we always want to be as consistent, I would hope, as possible within campuses. I think then that possibly could put us into a financial situation where getting that same bang for our buck at the next site would be difficult to do. And I know that's a, an unusual way to look at a grant.
Well, I can't say they have had that grant multiple times because I got it for the playground at the church. So it's not something that.
Well, I asked him if he would be eligible again.
And he said, no. Okay. All right. Well, I was just curious. I was just having a minute.
But we can order it through your church every time.
Yeah.
I didn't say that.
I think there's a lot more to do with the Game Time one.
Yeah. If I were a kid, that looks a lot more fun to me.
And the other part of that, I mean, we, we have been with Play World. We've used them. We're, we're familiar with them. And how do we find out if another piece of product is better and lasts longer if we don't actually try it either? So I think there's two or three different thought processes that we need to go through on this whole scenario.
Yes, I assume this is just, is this a first read?
Yes, yes, sir.
I got, I'd like to just have you talk to faculty at Edith Sherman and kind of review both of these options with them and get some feedback from them as to which one they think would be preferred. Because essentially, we're within a pound of dollar difference between the back script.
Yeah.
I'd like to have that saved. I'd be back from that.
I'll get that and then have it, get it dispersed to all priorities next week. Anything else?
Well, thank you. Okay, item D three, the Board of Education is asked to consider and approve the purchase of the Cinnabots Autonomous Scrubber and Sweeper from Pure Zone for plant facilities in the amount of seventy-three thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'm going to ask Brad to come up here and join me during this. And this is a topic that we have out of plant facilities. And honestly, when I start talking about Cinnabots, it makes me hungry. But that's why I'm going to get Brad up here too. Because with Brad's experience, we're, we're getting these, getting this quote through Pure Zone. You know, the cost, when I first saw it, wow, you know. But it's an autonomous sweeper and a scrubber, two different components. They brought them in and demonstrated them for us, the sweeper part of it. We're proposing it for the high school, which obviously has a large area to sweep and scrub. And my experience has also been, you know, there's a belief within there, even with the, the cleaning system that we're doing, the team cleaning services, is that we're not as fully staffed as we used to be there. And I think this is a step that would help us become fully staffed. One of the struggles with staffing is obviously finding them. Everybody experiences that. You know, if this one doesn't charge, they don't get to work the next day. But for the most part, if this one's charged up and goes. But I want Brad to give some more details about how many square foot it will cover, how many hours we could run it a day and, and kind of what your plan is.
Okay. So thank you for taking your time to listen to this. Like you said, the autonomous scrubber and the sweeper. As you all seen, you've probably been to Walmart, Sam's, Obebo, things cruising around. The technology has greatly improved over the last even five, ten years, even probably within months in technology world. The sweeper itself, like he said, they brought it out. I have seen it three times now at different campuses. Here for the sweeper. So all in for that with the sweeper and charger, you're looking at thirty-three thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and point five cents. Maximum, maximum production for this equipment, if it runs from wall to wall, length of fall, everything is around twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight square feet. It does have a cool feature if we want to use it to just search for trash. It just kind of mobilizes, goes around the campus, making cover up to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand square feet in an hour. Maximum runtime on that is thirteen hours. The really cool thing with the Cinnabot technology is it uses not only sonar, uses LiDAR radar. So it's actually not just looking at like a GPS pinpoint. It's looking out and seeing the building as it moves throughout the day. So if somebody moves his podium over today, it's going to sense it. It won't run into it. It'll move around and go on. And with this high school having several activities throughout the night, with the intent of running it at night with less people, there's still going to be the opportunity, it might be encountering people. So it'll sense them, stop, alert them, hey, I'm trying to clean here. Move around them and go. So kind of comparing a human versus machine. A human can clean up to seventy-five hundred square feet of sweeping in an hour. Once you said twenty-one thousand square feet for the robots, almost three times more efficient. We do have a lot of absences at the high school. Got over a hundred and forty-five just this school year. So not only can we have people there, but we need to have them there daily doing their jobs. This technology has the option that senses its battery, finds out when it's low, it'll return back to its charging station, plug itself back in. My goal with this would be to put it, all the common spaces, hallways, we could put it in the gym, walking trail, everywhere that's a large space. With intention, we could possibly put in classrooms if we do some planning, leaving doors open and what such. For the scrubber, we're looking at thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred for all in. It's got a maximum hourly coverage zone of twenty-three thousand square feet with a six-hour runtime. Same kind of technology, LiDAR, sonar, radar, looks at everything, consents glass. They actually have a feature, it'll call for an elevator and take itself up and down if it needs to. All this technology reports back to an app that'll allow you to see what's kind of coverage, if it has problem areas, things you maybe need to correct. The company will come in, that makes this, will come in and program it for us and allow us to train with it at no cost. And they're always there for support. And consumables, roughly around fifteen hundred, probably for both sweeper and scrubber for just wear and tear items, squeegees, vacuum bags, filters. Questions on that? And that's the volts?
They're fifteen hundred, so like an annual?
Yeah, that'd be about an annual.
Good.
Yep.
So we do have budgeted funds for this. We also would be purchasing this through our Pure Zone dealer, through a cooperative with Emporia State University that they've let us piggyback on, allow us to buy products from them already. So that's why it's okay to buy a single source in a particular instance. We do have some examples, and that was the, the one unique thing that, that Brad kind of brought to me. And while sticker shock was a little high for me, but after kind of seeing it and seeing what it does, it's not that high. But we've got some comparisons in your packet of what, what other products similar to this are. This Cinnabot is, is kind of an, maybe it wasn't out as quickly as a few of these others. But we, we've looked at, at kind of the reviews on it, and it's a strong product.
What do you think you'll get? Like, how many years of life do these machines have on average or expected to have?
Well, since you kind of said they're, they're so new, I mean, I'm not for sure if there's been one out there yet that's decided to crash just with its lifespan.
Is there a warranty?
I'm sure there is. I did not pull it. I could find that information.
What's the battery life look like as the other?
So like I said, the, the floor scrubber is six hours. And the sweeper.
I'm thinking in a battery life of use, but I'm thinking how many years it's going to get down.
So.
Sorry.
Yes, that's all right. I think these batteries are a higher efficiency. I believe they have a longer shelf. I'd have to find out the exact length of them. Most of the scrubbers and sweepers we have now, we're looking at a year, year and a half of use before we have to think about replacing any. Some of them are over five years. And so they've, they've improved the battery quality. I think these are maybe lithiums.
Did you say they do these for you?
Yeah, so I, we had them up at the high school, the sweeper. I drove out to Dodge City School District and watched scrubber and sweeper. And I've also seen them in Hutchinson at their trade show. And I've also, I've been out with, Tennant is the brand you've probably seen around Sam's Club. I've had two of their robots out at different campuses. And to me, the, the thinking process of them is so much quicker with the Cinnabot. We had an example in Hutchinson where they had a setup like this, and they're doing a demonstration, and the guy had programmed it. Here's your boundaries, clean it. And a couple came in late and moved some chairs out of the way and sat down. That thing didn't even hesitate. It just turned and went right in front of them and cut around them. Like it was, it knew they were there.
Always hesitant to say this, but they're using them at Kansas State University, so.
I'd like, they just purchased two of them for the student center, I think, the student center. I think that's two of them. Do you know some of the warranty stuff that was on them?
We'll find that out.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Item D four, fire alarm system at Plymouth Elementary School. Brandon, you're up again.
Well, this is another item when we talked about Plymouth and, and kind of one of those necessary things that we need to do, an antiquated fire alarm system at Plymouth. In the LRF Long Range Plan, we've got ninety-five thousand budgeted for this. We got a quote from Davis that's done our fire systems. Their quote comes back at sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety. So well within what we have budgeted for that, which is always a good thing. But I'd like to offer that for your consideration, the quicker the better, obviously, on this, but first reading on this item.
When, when can they start on that? If we.
Not sure how invasive that would be with the day-to-day school. But my hope would be, and we could wait till the next meeting, my hope would be definitely spring break.
Questions about that? We've talked about that many times.
Same.
All right, item G five, the HVAC at Horsegood Middle School.
Okay, so if you remember back when we talked about, and we did pull the trigger on Bernadine Sitz, their roof, and we, we talked about some items that, that we would also look at. One of the others that was in the long-range plan was the locker rooms at, at Horsegood Middle School. And so we've got them on the long-range plan, budgeted at originally zero, but we were kind of talking about if Bernadine Sitz came in at the smaller number versus the higher number. I can't tell you, we, we did have it checked. I can't tell you, we, we did have it checked, and, and we feel like the numbers that we're hearing. Obviously, I'm not gonna throw a hard number out there, but it's gonna be closer to the lower number that we've talked about, so knowing that. And knowing that Bernadine sits is in the process of being bid, I'd like to get the ball rolling on this project, which we feel like. That's in this, uh, Long Range Plan this time. Um, it, it's budgeted at around eight hundred and three thousand on our original plan. What we've done too, and this is something I'd like to do moving forward, similar to what GMC has done for us when it comes with roofs. Giving us a dollar figure to kind of work with. On the front side of this, we got with, uh, GMC hired ICE and Tate Row and Wallace Electric to come in. And work with us as we walked through, when I took this project, it's kind of a, um. It's not, it's not a VRF system, which is what we've, we've gone in with on some others. Uh, but it's a system, it's a hybrid system that would kind of fit exactly what, what our needs are in that particular area. Um, and with the quote and with bouncing those ideas off of everyone that was involved, we put those numbers together. And they believe this project's gonna be about nine hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. Um, obviously, that's higher than the eight hundred and three thousand dollars we've got budgeted. I also feel like a few of these other projects are gonna come in under budget. Very similar to what we've just saw with the fire alarm system, uh, saving some money there, so I feel comfortable recommending that we move forward. Uh, with design of this project and bidding of this project at Horsegood. And so what I'd be asking for, um, is to pull that trigger, and it would trigger a fee of eighty five thousand dollars with DMCN to move forward. Uh, with that process. There are some items, um, in, in the back two pages, talk about the entire project, the first two pages are the proposal. Um, there are some things that we'll have to make some decisions on, there's two offices and. A training room that we're only talking about putting heat in at this time. If we were to put it, want to put in AC in those, it'd be a four thousand dollars per office, so another twelve thousand dollars. Um, we could abandon the boiler in place, but if we wanted to remove the boiler, it would add another approximately fifteen thousand dollars to the project. Um, and then also to remove, uh, one of the old air handler units. Uh, if we were to do that, it would give us a, a ten thousand dollar deduct. So those are decisions we can make as that bid comes in and what we're looking at there.
And you're thinking a summer?
Yes, I would, if, if we get on it quick enough, we can get a bid and get it into the summer, yes.
Got a motion to go forward with this?
That would be great, we could get the ball rolling on that. But certainly, it's up to you guys, if you want to wait for your second reason, it's going to.
Make the motion, we go forward with the bid as presented.
For the HVAC?
The HVAC system, yeah. Of course, good.
Bid for the design proposal.
Eighty five thousand dollars design.
Thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to move forward with the HVAC proposal, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your left hand. Oh, same, motion carries. Okay, item H, the board open discussion. Jackie, you're first.
Everybody had a good break? Winners joined us?
Uh, yeah, not, not a whole lot. The meeting tonight, um, welcome all our students and faculty back, um. Feel like we had a really bad weather snap right before last semester, we started spring semester last year. There you go, I feel like this happened last year.
Yeah, deja vu.
So, uh, anyways, uh, appreciate all the hard work. Our, uh, facilities team has been doing and preparing these campuses for staff to come back, thank you, thanks for that. So.
Had a lot of opportunities to do some visits with the, uh, different schools and their board faculty meetings, you've got those notes, and. Uh, it's really exciting to see what's going on in the different schools that are. Just the lighthouse teams and everything, and just very encouraging, uh, to see that in a world where we see so much negative around us. It's good to see all the good that's going on, and, uh, just that we can be encouraged that there are, there are good things happening. And amidst all the negative with that, so had a lot of fun with those, and. Um, a lot of things, a huge, like Andy said, thanks to the staff for getting things together and, and working on getting the schools ready to open. Uh, I just know there's a lot of, a lot of things that go along with that, as I have to take care of the own, the church myself, and so. It's, it takes a lot to get done, so I appreciate all that that you have going on there, and. Just, uh, glad, and hopefully everybody's had a great break, and are ready to get started for the second semester here.
Um, I go, um, Jessica, thank you for all your work on the audit, the budget, and everything you guys do there, I know that's a ton of work to do, get ready for those. Um, congratulate Diego again for his accomplishments and what he's done, and. I appreciate everybody working together on the kiddos that got stuck out of town for the wrestling deal, I know that's a. I appreciate everybody's being flexible on that and, and, uh, taking our students' safety in, in the, in the consideration, so. That's it.
Um, I will echo what Randy said about the kiddos, um. I care about all the kids, but one of my grandbabies was gonna be on that bus too, so I was freaking out a little bit, and, um, along that line. I saw that the girls wrestling team is nationally ranked, so that's super exciting. Um, I was very pleased with the parking lot when I came in, I know what the parking lot looks like. At my office, and it's hard to get that much ice off of that much. Concrete, so good job. And looking forward to a great year.
All right.
Well, when you're last, everything's pretty well uncovered, you know? Uh, like the facility team for putting all the, uh, information together for us to. And go forward with the facilities and, and keep them up, uh, like, thank the finance, Jessica and, and, and folks for. Hey, the audit turned out well, uh, Diego, that was cool to see that, that recognition that he got tonight, and just looking forward to the. We're at halftime now, right, now it's the second half, so I'm looking forward to the second half here.
Doctor Dominguez?
Yes, uh, once again, just so glad to be here, the, the weather always. Uh, plays tricks on us in January, and, and you're right, Andy, the last January board meeting was, we had bad weather, so. It kind of hits, and then the, the good thing is, uh, we do have great maintenance. Team, we do have a good plan and try to address it. Is it perfect? No, weather's not perfect, so therefore we just have to address it. Like for public comments on the dome, that's always gonna be, um. Everybody's got an opinion about it, audit. Think, buttoned up, taking care of our business financially, fiduciary duty always comes first and foremost with, uh, a district, so. Glad that we're clean on that curriculum, we're gonna keep moving with our AP, our upper level courses, and. Always gonna do what's best for students, and then that's being shown on the playground, equipment. Um, fire alarm, the HVAC, that's all going to, um. Anytime you defer maintenance, it's, it's just gonna catch you sometime, or it, it's gonna catch you now or catch you later, so might as well address it and try to move forward with it. Uh, scrubber, sweeper plant, um, purchase, that, that'll help, that'll give us a, a testing spot. Where to set maintenance now, but then, uh, maybe go to other buildings, be able to help alleviate some of those. Uh, issues when we do have hiring issues, it means difficult to hire custodials here, it, it is, so. That's always good, but glad to get the second semester started and, um, excited about the year, so. Thank you for the leadership team, thank you for maintenance, and, um, the board, and definitely. Great for you guys as far as their service, thank you for your service, I always appreciate it.
Yeah, next board meeting will be, take place on Monday, January third. At four PM in the board meeting room, the Education Sports Center, twelve oh five from the studio. We will move on to item J, executive session.
Good. Mr. President, I move the Board of Education go into executive session for fifteen minutes for the purpose of having. Preliminary discussions about the acquisition of real property in order to protect the district's financial interests. And bargaining position beginning at seven PM. And that the Board of Education reconvene and open session at seven fifteen PM. In the board meeting room, I'd like to invite Dr. Dominguez, Jennifer Penningham, Josh Kam, and Drew Ton, Jessica Nother. To join us in executive session.
We move into executive, we move to executive session, any discussion? Favor, raise your left hand. Oh, same, motion carries.